Public hearing and issuance of industrial revenue bonds, Douglas Place LLC.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Council, in August of 2011, as part of the approval of all of the incentives relating to the development of the Ambassador Hotel and the redevelopment of the Douglas Place area, which includes not only the renovation and development of the hotel, but also the development of a parking garage, an urban park, and so on. One of the actions taken by the City Council at that time as part of the development agreement was to approve a provision that constitutes a two-year letter of intent for the issuance of industrial revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $22 million to finance the renovations and improvements for the Ambassador Hotel project, the renovation of the former Union National Bank building at the corner of Douglas and Broadway in downtown Wichita. Along with the industrial revenue bonds, the developer came, and the approval of the letter of intent, the developer became eligible for a sales tax exemption on the construction materials involved in the renovation, and also on the furniture fixtures and equipment going into the hotel. The project, the renovation project for the hotel was completed shortly before the end of the year. There might have been a couple of things that got finished after the beginning of the year, but that project is complete now. The hotel is open and serving the public, and the developer is prepared at this time to proceed with the issuance of industrial revenue bonds. The final amount that was determined after construction was completed for the bond issue is not to exceed $17 million. The project, as everybody, I think, is aware, is the renovation of the former, the 14-story, former Union National Bank building in downtown Wichita into a 117-room upscale boutique And the bonds will serve, will finance all of those costs, and will also provide the perfect legal basis for a sales tax exemption. The total value of the sales tax exemption that the developer has been able to realize through this construction project is slightly more than $700,000. At the time of the approval of the development agreement and the letter of intent for the issuance of industrial revenue bonds, a cost-benefit analysis was performed. This project was undertaken as part of the new downtown incentives policy of the city, and the process that was put into place is a result of Project Downtown Master Plan of the use of a joint city staff and public evaluation team to evaluate all of the incentives that were being considered for the project and to make a recommendation. And as part of that process, and under the terms of that policy, this cost-benefit analysis was done. The downtown incentive policy requires, as a threshold for projects to be considered, that the ratio of benefits to costs for the city's general fund be at least 1.3 to 1. It differs from the city's economic development incentive policy, which is a joint-city-county policy that relates generally to incentives used throughout the city for industrial recruitment and expansions and that sort of thing. And in that case, the incentive policy, the overall incentive policy requires the city to look at the ratio of benefits to costs for both the general fund and the debt service fund. In the case of the downtown incentives policy, it focuses solely on the impact on the general fund. The ratio of benefits to costs for the city's general fund, as measured at that time, showed a ratio of 2.62 to 1. It's worth noting that the same, because the analysis is done by the Center for Economic Development Business Research at Wichita State University, using their standard model, it also automatically reported the ratio of benefits to costs for the city's debt service fund and for the city overall. The ratio for the city's debt service fund was low. It was actually 0.83 to 1, less than 1 to 1. Of course, at the time, we were curious about why it was so low, and so we investigated that. The reason is that part of this project, not the renovation of the hotel building for which these bonds are intended, but the overall project included the use of city general obligation bonds paid from general property taxes accruing to the debt service fund. Approximately $4.6 million of the total $8 million project for the garage and the urban park was financed with city bonds, again, paid by general property taxes accruing to the debt service fund. That fact made the ratio of benefits to costs go down. The analysis looks at, on the cost side, the property tax revenue that has to be used to pay off the bonds, and on the benefit side, it looks at the marginal increase in property tax revenue resulting from the improvements made to the hotel property. However, in the case of the parking garage, the, and the parking garage is exempt from property tax because it's a city-owned parking garage, the costs outweighed the benefits. Now, on the city overall ratio, it was also slightly below 1 to 1. It was .9 to 1, and the reason for that is that that's an amalgamation of the impact that the project has on the city's two principal taxing funds, the general fund and the debt service fund. So, taken everything together, it showed that lower ratio of benefits to costs. However, looking solely at the general fund, which is what the policy requires, the ratio of benefits to costs is 2.62 to 1. I'd also point out that the analysis assumed, on the general fund side, that the city would be giving up 75% of the transient guest taxes for the hotel. On the cost side, on the benefit side, the city would be gaining the 25% of bed taxes coming from the transient guest tax. So, in that regard, this ratio of benefits to costs for the city's general fund is actually understated somewhat, since we did not end up utilizing the bed taxes and incentive for this project. The, as I mentioned, they're ready for the issuance of the bonds at this time. Part of the project includes historic preservation tax credits, which have been placed with a variety of investors, the state tax credits and the federal tax credits, and that has delayed, because of the complexity relating to tax credits, has delayed our ability to bring this to you until now. We're running short on time, actually, for the issuance of these bonds in order to be able to legally take advantage of the sales tax exemption, so that's why we're here today, asking you to authorize the issuance of the bonds. Dave Burke, who's a principal in Douglas Place LLC, is here, if you have any questions, along with attorneys representing the tenant and the bond issue, as well as the city's bond counsel, if you have any questions. City staff recommends that you close the public hearing that was scheduled because of the bond issuance, and approve first reading of the bond ordinance that authorizes the execution of the bond documents for the issuance of industrial revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $17 million. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Alman? Seeing that there are none, at this time, we'll go up for public discussion. Is there someone from the public that would like to speak on this item?
Mayor, members of the council, Bob Weeks, 2451 Regency Lakes Court. Well, I appreciate Mr. Bell bringing this information to our attention. It will make my speech shorter to us, but, you know, I think that the idea that we would go ahead and proceed was something that has a negative cost-to-benefit ratio, whether it be a special downtown policy or not, I think is really bad policy. Negative, well, it's 0.9, but that's negative in, not arithmetically, but negative in terms of its economics if it's less than 1. So, you know, I think the city policy, the 1.3 to 1 requirement, even though it doesn't require to the debt service fund in this particular instance, as Mr. Bell explained, I still think that's a wise policy to follow. And I was reading minutes from past City Council meetings just the other day, where many times this council was worried that a proposal brought to you for tax abatements, industrial revenue bonds, whatever it was, did not meet the 1.3 to 1 threshold, and sometimes the project was scaled back. Maybe we offer just a 70% tax abatement or something to bring that 1.3 ratio, or the ratio up to the 1.3 standard. So, I think that that is a good benchmark. It's a good idea that we should still follow that policy. You know, very often, this council talks about, "We want to make decisions based upon policy, not just on an ad hoc type of basis." Here, we have policies in place, I think, that are, well, I might disagree with them, but nonetheless, they're policies that you have thought that are wise to implement, and here, we're thinking about sidestepping the policy and doing something else. We have a chance here to show that decisions can be based on policy, not on, and I hate to use this word, cronyism, but that's really what it is here, I think. And we're going to be asking, I think, this council for the city to trust us more in the future. The mayor has spoken about a dedicated source of revenue for economic development in Wichita, and we would like to see that those funds are managed according to policy, not cronyism. And I see this really as an important instance today, where we can say, "We value policies more than people, more than a specific project," because I think there's some people on the other side of the aisle that are going to come up and talk about how great the hotel is and everything. Well, the hotel's already up and running, isn't it? And, you know, the city, people of the city of Wichita, when they had a chance to vote on a small part of the financial incentives that this council granted to the hotel, the city, people of the city of Wichita said no, and I think they said no in a resounding fashion as well. I think that if this matter were put out to vote by the people, they would say no as well. I think that this city should stand by its policies and vote not to do this today. And thank you. I'd be happy to stand for questions if there's time.
Counselor Meister.
Good morning, Mr. Weeks. Thank you for your comments, actually. Are you aware, the 1.3, that now, my couple of years into this, the discipline of a return is important, and I think you acknowledge it, it sets a standard. In your research that you do, are you aware of what, if any other city in Kansas even has a minimum return on investment, especially Topeka, Kansas City area? I know that Hutchinson and Newton do not, they're smaller, but are you aware if any other city in the state of Kansas has a minimum return on investment required on their stuff?
No, I don't have an answer to that question.
Okay. Next, I mean, sometime, I know we've had some email dialogue. If, I can try to do it, but you do a better job of research. It'd be interesting to know if any other city even had a minimum return on investment that we somewhat discipline ourselves with these decisions. But thank you very much for your comments.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, and members of the Wichita City Council. My name is John Todd. I live at 1559 Payne here in Wichita, Kansas. Before you approve the diversion of $700,000 in sales tax revenue to the Ambassador Hotel developers today, I would ask that you exercise good stewardship on behalf of the citizens of Wichita by vetting the progress of this project to date. The February 28, 2012 referendum vote was about diverting guest tax revenue to the developer. The opponents for the tax diversion in their vote yes for new jobs advertising flyer titled "The Creation of 1,102 New Jobs." Vote yes for new jobs, 1,102 new jobs, millions in new revenue, visitors pay, no new taxes, mayor and the city council approve the project 6 to 1. As you will recall, the voters rejected this proposal by a 60 to 40 margin. Today, you're looking at another tax diversion for this same project developer. Before you approve this tax diversion, I would ask that you provide an accounting timeline for the citizens of Wichita to review with a breakdown of the actual jobs created by this project over time. So, I want to look at all of these, talking about 1,100 jobs, I want to know, when, were the construction jobs? What is the hotel doing right now? I mean, let's see the impact over time. That's what I'm asking for. How many contemporary construction jobs were there, and how many people are currently employed in the hotel? As a private-public partnership, perhaps additional vetting is in order for this project. As part of this process, can the city's economic development staff provide the public with a copy of the business pro forma for the hotel? That's the current pro forma. How well is the hotel doing? What kind of economic impact is the project having on our city? Has there been any impact on other hotels and restaurants in Wichita? Perhaps Wichita State University Center for Economic Development and Business Research Department should be asked to evaluate the performance of this project to date from the public's perspective before you approve the diversion of additional tax money to the project developers. You have an opportunity today to vet this project for your constituents and for the citizens of Wichita. I ask you to do this vetting before you approve the diversion of tax money to these developers. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr.?
John.
Just a second.
You allude like this as a new incentive. When you mentioned that the city approved this project 6 to 1, wasn't the R O Bs already in that 6 to 1 vote?
I don't know. I think they were.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Next person.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. My name is Shirley Cohen, 442 South Waverly Street. Actually, now, it's just Waverly Street, the post office changed it, but we didn't move. The Wichita Eagle on June 26, 2012 headline read, "The City of Wichita to Cut Services, Avoid Layoffs in the Proposed 2013 Budget." Yet here we are again with the council moving to divert some of the city revenue to a public-private partnership, and by diverting, I mean, we just won't get that revenue. Douglas Place LLC, the entity that owns the Ambassador Hotel, is asking the city council to approve city revenue, to, I'm sorry, to approve industrial revenue bonds to be sold and the finance, whatever they buy with it, the sales tax would be exempted. According to a notation on the City of Wichita 2012-2013 adopted budget on page 58, the city's share of the county-wide sales tax in 2012 was $50,824,974, or about 9% of the budget. Consistent with the 1985 pledge, half of that is to go to the general fund, and I think we heard that mentioned as being used already in connection with the hotel in the past, to the general fund for possible lowering of the mill levy, and the other half was to go to sales tax construction pledge fund for new roads and highway construction projects. Not only has the Ambassador Hotel already received the benefit of a number of subsidies, Wichita voters soundly rejected a project, I mean, a portion of the guest tax from going to the hotel, we've already spoken of that. In spite of the cuts to city services now, city commissioners want to exempt the Ambassador Hotel developers from sales taxes, which amount to almost 3/4 of a million dollars. My question is, we seem to be doing a lot of diverting the sales tax. I see this as being very unfair to other businesses, which have to collect that sales tax and which don't get the benefit from it, and I'm wondering if we keep doing this, how much money we're going to have left in the sales tax fund to do the things that are required of the city to do. For instance, on the budget, one of the cuts that was listed, and I'm not sure whether this has been implemented or not, was to eliminate Channel 7, which broadcasts the city council meetings, I think I'm correct in that? Is that still being done? Or did we cut that out?
We're still broadcasting.
You're still broadcasting, okay, because that hit me, it's kind of a loss of transparency. Noted also in the budget highlights of 2012 and 2013 adopted budget, quote, "Property tax revenue will be shifted back to the debt service fund. One mil of the property tax revenue was shifted from the debt service fund to general fund in 2011, allowing the city to capitalize on economic development opportunities. One mil of the property taxes will be moved back to debt service beginning in 2013 with the other half in 2014." That's the end of the quote. My question is, is this the way our city funds, that our city funds public-private ventures with cuts to constituent services and more or less borrowing from paying down our debt? When is enough enough? Don't we need to take care of our core services first? Thank you. Are there questions?
Questions.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. My name is Susan Estes with Americans for Prosperity, and my address is 151 South Whittier. Mr. Mayor, when you were elected president of the League of Kansas Municipalities, the city issued a press release, and they talked about your comments. You said something that I thought was profound, and it's actually a reflection of something that's very important to me. In your comments to convention, and I'm quoting from the press release, "In the comments to the convention delegates, Mayor Brewer called upon L K M members to speak with a common voice on behalf of all Kansas communities. He also urged his fellow local leaders to restore the public's confidence in government." And that's the vein of my comments today. I think that we do exist in a time where there is a lowering of public trust in government across the board, and I think that your comments and also the 2013 guide for city candidates that the L K M also prepared reflected that as well, that that's still an issue. To quote from their guide to candidates and advice that they give when you serve, they say, "Public servants are the keepers of the public trust. Even the appearance of impropriety can tarnish the public's perception of government." And that's my specific point to you guys today, is when we look at the appearance of impropriety, when we vote to benefit our campaign donors, it takes away the public's trust in what you guys are doing. So, I call on you to voluntarily recuse yourself from voting in this if you've received campaign donations from the developers. Mr. Mayor, also, I looked at the Wichita Code of Ordinances, Section 2. It talks about ethics for council members, and I thought this was very relevant for today. It begins by saying, "Council members occupy positions of public trust," and it goes on later to say that, "The council members shall refrain from making decisions involving businesses, associates, customers, clients, friends, and competitors," and I'd ask you to bear that into mind when you decide whether or not to vote today as you do vacation with some of the developers that are involved in this project. I just think that we have an appearance of conflict of interest here, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
I do have one question for you. Do you believe that that's equally, you have that same opinion, that same view at the state level, at all government level?
Absolutely. There are things that my husband and I turn down because we want to avoid that appearance. And I understand the burden that's on you guys, and I understand that you start working with people and you become friends, and I also understand the sacrifice that you make to serve from your families. I share that.
I think what's important is, one of the things that we as policymakers believe in is that, well, not all of us, because obviously, I made that comment because you know that we've seen some things that have happened, particularly in Topeka, and particularly with some individuals that view your same views to the T, with the exception of certain things when it becomes convenient for them. The thing is, is that it's about integrity, and the total amount that you actually see that by law that council members can actually receive, I measure that as, if someone thinks that I'm going to turn around and violate my integrity and my values, a maximum amount of $500, they're sadly mistaken. Now, you as an individual, if that's a choice that you make, and that's the dollar figure that you put on your own, then that's your business, and you're the person that has to go to bed and go to sleep at night. But there are a lot of individuals that play golf and spend time with individuals, they hang out, they drink, they go on various different social events together, and no one ever know anything about it, and they never, and have no idea it happened. What you're basing your information on is basically what's been disclosed on Mr. Weeks' website, and for his information, I think he needs to get it correct. I have never been to the Caribbean, and most people ask me, "Can't he tell that that's Lake Texomah?" I start questioning those types of things. The point is, I'm not going to sell my integrity and my moral values, not for any, it's not for sale. It's not for sale to a friend of mine, it's not for sale for a friend of mine, it's not for sale for a family member, it's not for sale to anybody, because that's the only, my philosophy, and these councilmen will tell you, my philosophy is that, one, that's the only thing that I have. You can strip me of every single thing, you can strip me of my dignity, and you can lie on me if you choose to, but for me, I'm going to keep that, and I am never going to violate it. It's not for sale, it's not for giving to anyone. So, I understand what you're saying, but the exact same thing, and the company that you were, the organization you represent, and many others, you know, we all have certain opinions about each other, and I certainly have mine about the organizations that you have. And me, as an elected official, I have an obligation to the citizens of this community, and not only that, but to my family, because when those things are actually being said, or they're inaccurate, or somebody spreads some type of crazy, outlandish lie, because then my family get a chance to hear that type of stuff, my grandchildren get a chance to hear, so, but they know that, hey, the grandfather or the father is not that way. So, I take, when you make comments like that and try to insinuate that I'm going to sell my integrity for a friend or for somebody that I may go fishing with, you are sadly mistaken. And if you think that I'm going to sit by, and if you think that I'm going to allow you to violate that, I've been calm, and I've been patient, and I've been tolerant, and allowed individuals to say certain things that were not true, at some point in time, you have to do a gut check, and you have to say, "I'm going to make a stance, and I'm not going to allow this anymore." Now, I know what my attorney recommend, but I have the same right as a citizen, and I intend to start exercising some of those rights, because, as I said, we're talking about my integrity, we're talking about my values, and we're talking about individuals that think that they can just say whatever they want to say, and part of that is probably the problem we're having in America, and certainly at the state level. I think it's important that you hear this, because you're trying to subtly make these allegations, and I'm making sure that I get you straight on what my position is on it.
My bottom-line message is that you guys have a responsibility to void an appearance of an impropriety according to the standards set by the League of Kansas Municipalities, and your own code says you should not be voting And your own code says, "You should not be voting or making decisions that relate to the financial interest of your friends." And I do believe that you are a person of integrity and I'm calling on you to use that integrity to recuse yourself from voting on this issue. Thank you for your time.
Second, Susan.
Susan, I have a quick question, since we're kind of into this philosophical discussion. You mentioned at the state level, you and your husband have declined. If, one thing I've noted at the state level, none of the hearings are televised, it's not near as transparent as what's here, which is their choice. But all of the rural representatives that probably receive donations for their campaigns from their fellow farmers, I'm making an assumption here. What you're saying is, would everybody at the state of Topeka legislated have to reclusive themselves from any farm or rural water, which is a big deal in this state? Would they, under this premise, would they have to, your same theory, would they have to reclusive themselves from those kind of decisions?
I appreciate your question, because actually, we've begun to look at, we think there's a need for pay-to-play reform laws. And I certainly see a need for those at the state level as well. There is a lot of time spent after hours where things that should be happening in hearings are talked about and the public doesn't get to see that. So my philosophy is just as applicable to the state level as it is to here. I think it's a travesty that we're one of the few states left that doesn't broadcast as many as our hearings as we should. To your specific question, I'm in the, we've been at the preliminary look at how do you draft specific language that's workable. But I think it's something that merits conversation and it'd be very open to your input.
I'm just curious how the state would legislate if, I guess farm issues would be decided by city people and city municipality issues would be decided by rural people up in Topeka for that matter? If this application was, if the same application applied in Topeka as what you're requesting us to apply?
Well, I don't think that, what your example, you said that you were making an assumption and I hate to comment on it because I honestly don't know, I'm not that familiar with some of the rural finance reports.
Finance reports are very transparent.
They are, but I can't claim to be an expert in every rural finance report that's out there.
If they just, if a legislator just had one donation from a farmer and 10 from businesses, should he or she have to reclusive themselves from the farm issue?
Well, I think it's an interesting question and I would be happy to take it up with you later.
I told you it was philosophical.
No, I understand. But I think it is time for us to have very serious conversations about these and I don't want to give a flip off-the-cuff answer to something that merits deeper consideration. Because that's the objection that the state legislators raised. So it's worth a discussion. But I think today, we have a more close at hand conflict of interest. So thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Manager, Jeff Flure, Downtown Development Corporation, 507 East Douglas Avenue. Just want to clarify, one of the things that came out of Project Downtown was that, listening to the development community, listening to the public sector, listening to citizens at large, they wanted a public investment policy that was clear, concise, that a project would have to go through, especially in the downtown area. You've heard downtown projects are not necessarily simple, straightforward projects. There's a lot of things that go into them to make them happen. Because in part, you're dealing with existing infrastructure, you're dealing with buildings that have been sitting vacant. It takes a lot to bring those buildings back into viable use that again are contributing to the property tax values that we have and also surrounding development. So as part of that, Project Downtown analysis, there is a public investment policy for downtown that was derived, working with city staff, working with private developers, both downtown but also across the city. We also engaged Sarah Woodworth, who was part of the master plan project team. Sarah's work, you know, is impeccable. She's known throughout the United States for her work in working with helping cities shape how you do things in your downtown area. So we used all those expertise and we developed a public investment policy. That policy was vetted and it was voted upon and agreed upon. This is the first project through it and I think even through the process, we learned things of how we can do things better. But again, it was a process that worked. The other thing is, is that you brought in beyond city staff, private sector analysis, if you will, from the financial community and also the developer community. So in addition to public, you had the private development community at the table, you had the financial community at the table, and then you also had a third-party analysis of the project as well. So I want the public to know that, as you do projects downtown, you know, that process eliminates a lot, should, a lot of the questions of, is someone getting special opportunities over someone else? Because that policy sets forth a very straightforward case of what the project is going to do, how the public investment is going to be done. And it's a policy actually that other cities are looking at as well. So just wanted to clarify that there is a policy in place, it works, it's one that does have a lot of different reviews in it, not only from the city side but also the private side as well. Thank you. Any questions? Question? Is there anyone else?
Hi, Jennifer Basinger, 15435 Wyndham Circle here in Wichita. I had absolutely no plan to stand up and share this morning, but a couple of thoughts have popped into my mind during that last exchange with Mrs. Estes. It was mentioned that, just philosophically speaking, if there were 10 donors that gave from this perspective and one donor that gave from this perspective, that provides balance to me. I really think, just as a citizen, just looking at this idea about campaign finance reform, the concern is when all of the campaign donations are made by developers, that's when people start to be a little curious and be a little concerned about bias. Please understand, when there's balance, if there are 10 other donors giving and then one farmer, that's balance. And many of you self-financed or had a variety of folks giving to your campaigns, I get that. That doesn't cause a red flag for me. But as a citizen, when I see a campaign finance report come out and there are only people from one vein giving, that's just a red flag. So I just wanted to share that concern.
Questions? No questions? Anyone else? I think that there is no one else, we'll bring the discussion back to the bench. Mr. Manager?
Mayor, Mr. Council, I just wanted to pick up a little bit on what Mr. Flure was talking about, but specifically when it comes to the public investments that are required or called for in the downtown plan. There was some criticism or some concern expressed about the debt service number. That was not to be part of the downtown plan because it was recognized that the city would be making investments in infrastructure that would benefit more than one property. And in the case of this garage, it was publicly bid, it was, yes, it benefited the hotel project, but it also benefits or will benefit the Henry's building as well as other buildings in that vicinity. There's excess parking spaces that are available for the public. And that is a change in philosophy from where we were about five years ago. The idea was not to put infrastructure or to put capital investment directly into a project, but instead into projects that would benefit multiple property owners downtown. And that's why the 1.3 applies to the general fund and not the debt service. WSU did run the debt service number, but if you look at it, it really is erroneous. It doesn't, it takes all of the capital cost for the garage and attributes them to the Ambassador Hotel, which is really not an accurate way of distributing those costs. And again, I wanted to underscore that because this council and staff has been criticized in the past for the way we invested in downtown projects and in response to that concern, have now invested in projects of shared value. And I wanted to make sure that that was understood as we went forward.
Chairman Leitner?
Bob, thanks for that explanation, because that was one of my comments or questions to Alan, was when we worked, some of us harder than others, to make sure that the public money on the public garage was a public investment used by the public, I have trouble with that debt being massaged into the public-private entity, which is the Ambassador Hotel. In a way, I could see where the park, the little 50 square feet of park, if we call it, is part of the deal, that's fine. But that garage serves the Kansas Leadership Center, you know, as the garage is built with a publicly bid deal, bid deal, not big deal, and then Kansas Leadership starts, utilizes it and then builds that building, I almost feel like the hotel should almost get brownie points or credit in the evaluation. So why that's a part of the, and got, it got explained, thank you, and I think it answered a lot of questions for all of us. But it wasn't really fair to put that debt into this project, from my perspective.
I have one more question and then...
Go ahead.
Just for clarity on the surety bond, on the ordinance, it's the attachment, on the second page in Section 2, the very last sentence, "These bonds shall not be general obligations of the issuer." The City of Wichita is the issuer, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not an obligation of the issuer, nor constitute a pledge of the full faith and credit of the issuer, again, the City of Wichita, and shall not be payable in any manner by taxation. I just want to make it clear to the public that we are just the issuer, we are not obligated and we are not a taxing authority on this, or charging the taxations for this payment of the bond.
That is correct. Another term that's often used, kind of a vernacular term for this type of financing is a conduit financing, meaning the city is serving merely as a conduit between the borrower and the lender to facilitate this as an industrial revenue bond, and which, in this case, is primarily, since there's no property tax abatement, being in a tax increment financing district, it merely facilitates the access to sales tax exemption.
Okay. Thank you. Number Blue Ball?
Thank you. You know, I believe this agreement was made well before I got up here and I'm just trying to get a better understanding of everything. Is this in any way a forgiveness of $700,000 in taxes that have already been paid that are being paid back?
No, no, it's not. It's a, it's better, I think a better word to use than forgiveness is avoidance.
Okay. And we've stated over and over again, there's no property tax abatement.
No property tax abatement.
And there's anything coming out of the general fund to support this? Other than...
Parking garage and urban park that we discussed before, no. Nothing for the general fund.
I mean, I've heard a lot of discussions here this morning about campaign contributors and everything else. I was largely self-funded myself and I guess I'm having a hard time understanding where some of these issues are coming from, because in looking at this, it does not look like the city's putting out, or out on a limb for this. Like, I guess maybe I'm, am I missing something or...
This is a piece of a larger incentive package that included facade improvements to the building. The facade improvements were in fact financed with general obligation bonds of the city to be repaid by special assessments paid by the property owner and that is a way of retiring that city loan over a 15-year period. So, you know, the historic tax credits were involved, there's been mention of a use of 75% of the transient guest taxes generated by the hotel to support the cost, which was ultimately not used following the failure of an election to approve that. So, you know, it was a large, complex project and there was a lot of public discussion and debate about this based more on a lot of the other incentives and not so much on the industrial revenue bonds. At this point, we're really following through with the issuance of the bonds that were provided for in the original project in order to perfect the legal claim for these sales tax exemptions that have already been taken advantage of by the developer.
Chairman Clinton?
My question has to do with, what impact has this project already had on city, on downtown and what sort of, what sort of dominoes have fallen since this project has been approved? I don't know if you'll have these numbers or not.
There's someone here who probably does, who was up here a minute ago, Jeff Flure, if you'd like him to come back up again.
Well, let me ask my question, he can come up if he needs to. There's been some talk about evaluating the hotel's performance four months after it opened, five months after it's opened, which to me seems somewhat ridiculous for any business to have to evaluate how they're going to do in the future, just four months after they open. But the impact that, we've made an investment, obviously, in this part of downtown for an empty building that really, the decision had to be made whether it was going to be imploded or if we were going to preserve part of our history downtown as one piece of the puzzle. And so we made an investment in a parking garage, likes to say, a 50-square-foot urban park, and this historical building. With the investment that we've made, can I get a sense of what investment, because of the investment we made, the investments that have been made on the periphery of this project? Is there any, like, we've put in $15 million in this project, what kind of private investment has been, has happened because of this project and us going forward with this?
Again, I know that Jeff Flure tracks that kind of thing a lot more closely than I do. Scott Kniebel's out of town at this time, so he's...
That's fine, Jeff can answer it, I just... I mean, was this a worthy project or, you know?
Undoubtedly, it was a worthy project. And what you had happen here is that you've had a project initiated in the Ambassador Hotel, came to the city and said, "We need public investment for a public garage." Again, this is not to serve the hotel, but has additional capacity. Again, got about the public investment policy and the plan. The city invested totally about $7.6 million in the garage, acquisition of the site for the garage and the urban park. In result, what you had is a $23 million investment that started with the Ambassador Hotel. The Kansas Health Foundation, for a period of time leading up to this, had been looking for a site for expansion. Their parking lot was not on the table for a development site because they needed the parking. Once the city made the commitment to build the garage, that site became their development site. They're investing today about $9 million. In that investment of $9 million, that's the first new construction along the core of Douglas in about 38 years. You also in that block have a vacant department store, Henry's, that's been sitting there for almost 30 years vacant. The owner of that, Lawson Companies, have already made improvements to the north facade in anticipation of leasing that building, which is about 30,000 square feet or greater. We are right now working both with local and regional and even some national interest in what could happen there. Furthermore, councilman, if you think about it, just south of here, the city owns the old Alice Hotel site, again, which is about three-quarters of a block. So in essence, we have done, I think, as a community, have made tremendous strategic investment. Because now, you're increasing the viability of a piece of real estate that is owned by the city, that again, opens up viability of development. A few weeks ago, the council approved, who spent about $375,000 to two-way... A few weeks ago, the council approved, who spent about $375,000 to Two Way William Street. Again, this all started as a result of a developer coming to you and saying, "We want to invest in downtown Wichita, we want to take a building that's been sitting vacant for over a decade and get it back into viable use, and as a result of that, we're seeing..." That's that interior of that block. Now, surrounding it, we're seeing opportunities as well, because now you have hotel guests going to Mead's Corner, if you will. We just had the announcement of another new coffee shop down the street. Again, you're increasing the viability of the area. The Kansas Leadership will be bringing over 1,000 people per year to that new expanded site. They will be feeding into, if you will, the Ambassador Hotel and surrounding uses. We also have conversations going on with surrounding commercial properties. Again, it all, it's connected, and there is benefit to making such investment that the city did in $7.6 million or so for the garage, the urban plaza, and really helping this project move forward.
Would you consider, I mean, we probably have to consider some of the incentives that the city utilized as part of the public investment as well, in that?
Correct. I mean, you...
I mean, we invested in the parking garage, I mean, that's public infrastructure, that was paid for with the TIF, the downtown TIF, so...
A portion of the TIF, not even 100% of the TIF is going to that. Yes, sir.
All right, that's what I needed, thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Miller?
Here.
Yeah? Go ahead. I thought maybe you were wanting Jeff. Flure?
Oh, no.
You mean Jeff?
Sorry, I was confused.
Sorry.
I was thinking Jeff that was not here right now.
No.
Or the Jeff that's sitting next to me. I've got a Jeff confusion. Okay, I have a number of things to say here on several different topics, and I apologize to those of you in the audience and my colleagues who've heard me say some of these things before. But because of the amount of misinformation, and because of a number of the things that have been said here today, I am going to take the time to clarify a few things that I think are very important to say. First, I'd like to start with just information about this project that I said a couple of years ago, when the project was first discussed, and I think bear repeating today. This particular project has 27% private equity in it, in the private project part. It has 20, more than 20% equity in the public and private part. Benchmark for this, the minimum, was 10%. So it has more than double, in one case, almost triple, the equity required on the part of the developer. We believed it was important to set out standards and criteria for evaluation of projects, which we did. And we had developed, the development community and many citizens who participated with, from a variety of perspectives and philosophies, participated in the development of these criteria. They're published on the website, anybody can see them. The minimum score on that criteria for any project is 70. This project scored 87.5%. One of the criteria was that the benchmark, private-to-public funding be two to one. In this case, the private-to-public funding is more than that, 2.2. We've already gone through the return on investment, which I think is important to note, for every dollar that the city invests in any part of this project, the return to the public good is 2.62. It bears reiterating again that the city's public investment in this project is going into public infrastructure. A parking garage, which is used not only by this particular hotel, but by organizations and entities and businesses and retail and state buildings and many other uses around that particular area. There is not money from the TIF going into the hotel itself. The facade improvement program that's being utilized here is being, all those funds are being repaid through special assessments on the property. The city retains 100% of the guest tax that's collected in this hotel, and that can be used to market Wichita, to bring other conventions here to town. That guest tax is paid by out-of-towners, for the most part, not local Wichitaans. We would not have that guest tax if it were not for this new hotel. Retail space in this garage is being leased to a third-party professional management entity who has the expertise to recruit high-quality tenants, and that's twinnets will result in increased revenue for the City of Wichita, and also sales tax revenue for the city. Additionally, the hotel will pay annually for use of the spaces in the garage, as will other entities around there who plan to have, use those stalls for their own business Now, I'd like to just say a few words about, to conclude, this particular part, those are the reasons that I have supported this project, and that I'm going to continue to support the project. Others have spoken to many other benefits here today, with which I concur. Then I want to speak just momentarily about some personal issues. One is that, when I ran for this position and won, I took a salary that's 30% of my previous salary. I have spent thousands of dollars serving in this role. I buy tickets to fundraisers, I travel, I go to other cities, I look at best practices, I bring those back to Wichita. There has not been a personal gain to me, serving in this role. I have never, in four years, accepted even lunch from a developer or anyone else who wanted to take me out to lunch and talk about a project. Never. I don't accept tickets to sporting events, I don't play golf, I don't take jet rides, I don't think most of us here do. I can speak for myself, I don't. If you look at my campaign finance reports, I have dozens and dozens and dozens of donors. If you add up all the contributions, they average out to something less than $100 per When we talk about this project having been voted down by the public, we'd like to remind people that, when that election came around, the City of Wichita at large, all of us up here, couldn't raise one single penny, promote the project, we could not advocate on behalf of the project, we could not even say one good thing about the use of that sales tax, excuse me, the guest tax. On the contrary, opponents were able to raise money, to market, to support, to advocate against the project, even with inaccurate information, and financed partly, either directly or indirectly, by one of the largest companies in the world. So to say that this project was voted down by the public, I think, is a real misnomer. If there's any clear evidence about how at least the voters in District 6 support downtown development, and the projects for which I have stood for, I was re-elected with 76% of the vote. I've been very clear with the public about my downtown support. Therefore, I have gotten contributions from like-minded people who support downtown, who support many of the causes, most of the causes I support. That's how that money comes to campaigns, is when people see you stand for issues with which they are like-minded, they contribute to your campaigns. With all of that said, I am going to support this project today, and I'm going to continue to maintain myself, conduct myself, in an above-board, above-beyond-reproach manner. And I can say unequivocally that campaign donations do not affect my decisions up here. Thank you.
Is there any additional discussion on this item?
Well, I just want to make it clear one more time, that this is not an additional incentive, this is not a new incentive, that this was voted on as Mr. Todd, I think, finally remembered six to one by the previous council. This was part of that package, so we're not adding anything new. I know that we've all received some emails that have encouraged us not to add anything new to the Ambassador project, we're not adding anything new. This was already voted on by the council, all we're doing is ratifying what was previously an intent to move forward with IRBs. They've already spent the money, they've done their obligation, in fact, they have saved the sales tax. All of that's behind us, we're simply ratifying it at this point, and I think the public needs to know that this is not a new incentive package today.
Anyone else? If there's no one else, Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Manager and Allen, for the additional information, and for the update on the information that we had. I wholeheartedly agree with Councilmember Longwell, and that doesn't happen an awful lot, but today, I do want to reiterate that this is nothing new, that the city is just honoring our obligation, we're following through with what we said we were going to do, and that is to look at the IRBs at the end of the project, and that's exactly what we're doing. I too am a person who values my integrity and my character, and so I would ask that you not only look at one page of a financial report, that you look at all of a report, and not judge me by what someone else is asking me to be judged by. I honor what I say that I'm going to do, and I don't let a campaign fund dictate what my decision is going to be. I am a person that believes in the downtown area, and it's not just because it's a part of District 1. But I can definitely remember going to Detroit for a huge convention, and coming away with a distaste in my mouth for downtown Detroit, because of the crumbling graffiti buildings in the downtown area, which is where most conventions are held. And so for me, that was a turning point, in looking at what people leave with the impression of Wichita, and will they be thinking the same thing? That's what Wichita was all about, should we ever go back. So we have to invest in something in order to get anything, and the private investment has been there, and the public investment and the public partnership is very important. And so for that, I am also in agreement with this project. I am in agreement because we have already included the IRBs in this judgment some years back. And yes, it was before one of our council members came in, but I hope that he can understand that this is something that we believed in then, and I think that most of us still believe in this project, and that we're just following through. And with that being said, I move that the City Council take the recommendations of the staff on the first page of the green sheet.
Second. Heard the motion is properly seconded, are there any questions? Councilman Meitzner?
I just want to clarify that I made no ill comment about the urban park, it's a nice park, I did it for emphasis, so, for the record, I think it's a great urban park, thank you.
Madam Clerk? Grab a ballot, cast your vote. Madam Clerk, display for the record. And the motion passes 6-1. On the next item?